The May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Richmond Sanitary District Board of Commissioners is called to order. The first item of business is approval of board minutes from the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion to approve the board minutes from April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve board minutes from April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting as presented. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is approval of invoices from check dates April eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and May second and ninth of twenty twenty-five.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for approval of invoices from check dates April eighteenth, twenty-fifth, uh, sorry, April eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of April. May second and May ninth, twenty twenty-five. The total amount was seven hundred and six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Notables included: Earlham College for ten thousand, two hundred and four dollars. Keystone Cooperative for twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Merrill Brothers Incorporated for thirteen thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. Two from Cooley Contracting LLC in the amounts of ninety-four thousand, fifty dollars and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy cents. Grip Incorporated for eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. There was another one from Earlham College Inc. for twenty-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. There was two from Simmerly General Contractor in the amounts of thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. There was also two from Huntington National Bank in equal amounts of thirty-six, excuse me, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, there was a single one from U.S. Geological Survey for thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And last but not least, Richmond Power and Light for fifty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents.
And I will second the motion. Um, there's a motion and a second. Um, are there any questions or comments? Um, what are the Earlham ones?
Those are easements related to the Midwest Industrial Park sewer expansion.
Okay.
I would have to look. Just around, I would have to look. I don't know about a payment that would have been made to Earlham.
Well, I know that they're part of like the MS four with us. I didn't know if it was something.
It's not a monetary, um, exchange on that, uh, usually, so I'm not sure what it.
I thought one was the Earlham Cemetery. I'll look at it and get.
Do we then exclude them or do we have a motion?
We can approve, but we can just get clarification later. Um, so as I said, there was a motion and a second to approve invoices from check dates April eighteenth and twenty-fifth and May second and ninth of twenty twenty-five totaling seven hundred and six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Um, the next item of business, Director's Report.
Uh, yes, Madam President and Board. Uh, before you is the March, uh, Director's Report. Um, my one note that I want to go over really is under the financial section. Um, and it lands on the revenues. Uh, you will see those being significantly lighter than normal. Um, the reason for that, um, is although the district does its normal recap and turns all of its money into finance office daily. Um, they wait for like a reconciled recap, um, to come to them before they input it into BSA. And BSA reflects when they actually put it in. So even if it was March as revenue and it's documented as March as revenue. If they receive that official recap in April, it goes into April's BSNA report. Um, I have looked at April's and I have the financials pulled for April and working on that report. But April, um, is significantly heavier than normal, uh, to reflect this. And the reason our reports were delayed in this month is we had, um, we had several staffing, uh, shortages. And we also moved to the new billing building, um, on February twenty-eighth, so March had a lot going on in it. So those reports were a little delayed. Um, but I'd talked through that with finance and kind of mapped out all these and made sure everything was lined up between March and Aprils and that we, we have those. So we're still slightly heavy even in coming into the first part of May, uh, still as a reflection of just playing that catch-up game. But, uh, we are on track and they do have all the data and we're, we're back at this point in time. Uh, but we're turning them in weekly and that they'll be matched up again. And that's the only comments I have on the March report unless there are questions.
No, no questions. No questions. Thank you very much. I give back my agenda. The next item of business is the recommendation to award the quote for three-yard trash containers.
Uh, yes, Madam President and Board. Jeff Lo Miller was unable to be here today. He was out and he was having issues remoting in, so I will, I will go through this. Um, so the solid waste department, um, is in need of three-yard commercial trash containers. Um, and we annually have a account for this to purchase or rehab these containers. Um, and these are a commercial collection, the brown, uh, three-yard containers. An RFQ seeking a three-year contract for twenty twenty-five with options renewed twenty-six and twenty-seven, uh, was sent out on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Um, in return to us at April eighth. Um, one response was received. That met the specifications of this RFQ. Um, the, after reviewing this, um, it is Randy Wright, the solid waste manager and Jeff Lo Miller's recommendation that we award. This purchase to Converto Manufacturing of Cambridge City, Indiana, um, at the following amounts. So we always put in for up to a hundred containers, um, is how it is written. Um, and the twenty twenty-five price is seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents each. Um, twenty-six is, in twenty twenty-six, if we optioned renewed, was eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents each. And in twenty twenty-seven, it was nine hundred and forty-four dollars and five cents each.
Did we say this was the first time we'd use this company?
This is the first time we had used this company.
Okay. Any questions or comments or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to award quote for three-yard trash containers as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the quote for three-yard trash containers as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to award the quote for household hazardous waste removal.
Yes, Madam President and Board. At our last board meeting, we received two quotes for household hazardous waste removal. Uh, the one quote, uh, was opened by mistake. The quote, uh, was not received by date requested. Uh, this quote was also invalid because Heritage Environmental Services no longer exists. They were bought out by another company. Um, the other quote we received was by Arkwood Environmental LLC. Their quote was received by the deadline and opened by this board. Um, recommendation is the landfill manager Darren Duncan and Jeff Lo Miller reviewed the quote. And is their recommendation to the ward, to the board to award the household hazardous waste removal. Uh, to Arkwood Environmental LLC of Indianapolis, Indiana, at the not-to-exceed cost of fifteen thousand dollars per year. Uh, in the contract, uh, we would request an option to renew for, to have an option renewed for twenty-six and twenty-seven. With the assigned acceptance by each party each year. This contract then would end if option to renews were exercised December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to award quote for ha- household hazardous waste removal as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to award the quote for household hazardous waste removal as presented. Uh, any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve change order number one to contract one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four with Safety Tech.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Uh, Safety Tech installed our new security system and cameras at our new location at twenty-five North Seventh Street. Uh, once the installation was started, there were two areas that were not being monitored as we had hoped. Um, Safety Tech was asked to install two additional cameras, uh, with hardware, uh, through a change order. The work on the security system was time-sensitive and needed to be completed, um, so it is already, uh, in the works. But this before you is change order one. Uh, for the attached signatures, the overall increase was two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Um, you'll see the original contract was for ten thousand, uh, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So this added that, two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty cents to that, making the total contract thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to approve change order number one to contract one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four with Safety Tech as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to, uh, approve change order number one to contract one ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four with Safety Tech as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve the purchase of mainline sewer camera using Sourcewell contract.
Uh, yes, Madam President and Board. Uh, Sewer Maintenance Department has in its fleet a CCTV system for televising our sanitary and storm lines. Uh, televising the collection system provides sewer maintenance and engineering information that is used to inspect, evaluate, and maintain our system. Uh, the new mainline sewer system, uh, will be retrofitted, uh, into our current camera truck as the truck itself is still in good condition. Um, our sewer maintenance department and engineering department, uh, have had several camera units in to look at. And to have hands-on training, uh, to see what makes the most sense for us. Um, there's a list there of four, of four systems that were brought into us, Best Equipment, Southeastern Equipment, M-Tech, and Brown Equipment. Most of these cameras are, were also sold through Sourcewell, uh, uh, contract number one-two-zero-seven-two-one dash RVL. Um, after reviewing those, the recommendation, uh, is that we award this to Brown Equipment of Evansville, Indiana. To rep retrofit their Rapid View IBAK camera truck mainline into our current camera truck at the cost of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. The original cost of this piece of equipment is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Through the Sourcewell contract number one-two-zero-seven-two-one dash RVL, uh, we will receive a four percent discount, saving ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Making our cost two hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents. We have worked with Brown Equipment, uh, for several years, um, on different projects and they have been good company to work with. Uh, we have budgeted a new camera system in our twenty twenty-five budget and this came in under our estimated cost.
Thank you. Not an inexpensive piece of equipment.
Not inexpensive at all. I think though that we had estimated two hundred and seventy, so I'm grateful that we were able to get at least twenty thousand dollars less than what we estimated this to be.
Okay. Any questions or comments or a motion?
What's the lifespan of the camera typically?
Elijah maybe I'll answer this better. We've had this one in for quite a while, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if I've heard an exact lifespan, but I, I don't think it, I mean, it should last fifteen years if you really want it. I mean, the big thing was technology has changed a lot over that time. Um, and like integration with GIS or, I mean, there's AI stuff coming out. And, um, so I think if, I think it would probably, I think that stuff you'd want to upgrade for that reason before you wear it out.
Good.
Which then begs the question of using our existing truck.
Yeah, the physical truck itself, yeah. I, I'm not sure if I've seen the breakdown of how much it costs to actually retrofit the truck itself, how much of the cost of this is associated with that.
It outlasts the truck if it.
Yeah, at that point, it might. Um, I know that the truck, um, itself, like when we did it la- when we purchased it last time, I feel like. It was like almost five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to do the whole thing. So, um, I think we're getting a lot of use out of some of the existing stuff inside the truck as well, not just the, the, the body. Um, which I think it was in an accident a number of years ago and, and they had to do, do some major stuff. But yeah, you're, you're right. There becomes a point, it doesn't make sense to, to do, to do that, but.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Motion for recommendation to approve purchase of mainline sewer camera using the Sourcewell contract as presented.
And I will second the motion. And there's a motion and a second to approve the purchase of mainline sewer camera using a Sourcewell contract as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to enter an agreement with Huntington Bank for the lease of three commercial trash trucks.
Uh, yes, Madam President and Board members. Uh, Jeff Lo Miller has been working with Huntington Bank on a lease agreement for three new commercial trash trucks over the past year. Uh, the trucks will be supplied by Pyramid Equipment of Rolling Prairie, Indiana. The trucks will be Freightliner chassis with Packmore HLR two-four side-load bodies. Um, Jeff reached out to Pyramid Equipment as they sell these trucks through Sourcewell. The quote he received from Pyramid is for the same type of trucks we have in our commercial fleet now. They are Freightliner chassis with a Packmore side-load body. The cost of these two trucks as a lease, excuse me, is three hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars each, a total of nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. The Sourcewell contract gives us a discount of four percent, equalling a savings of thirty-six thousand, four hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. The total cost of these, bringing the total cost of these three trucks to eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, which includes the discount. Uh, Huntington Bank gave the estimated lease quotes below in the following, so you'll see three, like a three-year, a five-year, and a seven-year, uh, situation. Uh, we would be looking at the five-year. Um, that's typically how long we look to keep these, our trash fleet. Um, they start wearing out at that point. Uh, but Pyramid Equipment, um, asked for fifty percent, which is a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents per unit. Um, once its chassis are delivered to Fountain Company for the addition of the steering wheels and control to the right side of the truck. Um, which is something we have to put on all of our trash trucks. That fifty percent cost in total for all the trucks is four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. That would be, be paid directly to Pyramid Equipment from the Sanitary District. Um, once the trucks are completed, which is estimated to be August to October, Huntington Bank will give us a commencement check. Huntington Bank will give a commencement check to Pyramid Equipment for the full amount of the eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents to pay them for the trucks. Pyramid Equipment will then write us a reimbursement check for the four hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Uh, check that we, down payment we, uh, paid. Um, when talking with Huntington Bank and Pyramid Equipment, this should take no longer than one to two weeks of, for that reimbursement check to turn around to us. Um, if the board agrees, uh, to proceed with this lease agreement, uh, we will get the paperwork drafted. Um, so that we can kind of sign off on that. And we've talked a little bit to the finance department as well. Um, our current budget, we have only the two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars in the budget for these trucks. There is other funds that are allocated for other items, so we could pay the four thirty-six for that one to two weeks, one to two weeks before it gets reimbursed. Um, and then our two hundred and nine will go then back to Huntington Bank as the first payment on the lease portion. And the other, um, and I, I listed here, the other, um, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and twenty cents would just come back into our account. For the allocated uses that it was set aside for. And when the paperwork is drafted, that would come back to this board. It will have written out all of that repayment methodology and the timeframes and all of that. We've asked for those statements to be included by Huntington Bank and Pyramid Equipment through the Sourcewell contract. That it will lay out that commencement check and down payment and how that will all play out.
Yeah, because I was confused because the three trucks with, out the retrofitting is nine hundred and ten. Is that right?
Without the Sourcewell discount is nine.
Okay.
With the Sourcewell discount.
So do we pay the nine-ten plus the four hundred and thirty-six to retrofit?
No, so we will pay the, and it's not really, it, yeah, to retrofit, that we will pay the four thirty-six. They're just asking for that fifty percent down payment on the trucks, which is fifty percent of the entire eight seventy-three, seven hundred and thirty-four, which is the discounted price. We pay that fifty percent. Um, and then Huntington Bank will go ahead and cut the whole lease agreement, the eight seventy-three to Pyramid Equipment. Pyramid will give us back the four hundred and thirty-six that we paid. So all we've technically paid, we have paid nothing at this point in time, but we're held to Huntington Banks where they paid the eight hundred and seventy-three. Then our lease agreement of us paying the two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, um, per year for five years will be that payback, um, to Huntington Bank for, through the lease.
Okay, I'm still confused.
Which the two oh nine includes, obviously.
Because it sounded to me like we had to pay the roughly three hundred thousand per truck. And then another, um, amount to have them retrofitted.
No, no, the three hundred and three was the breakdown of, of each truck for the total nine-ten, which then comes down.
To the eight-something. So that included the retrofitting?
Yeah, the retrofit is part of this. It's not really added to it. It's part of the original purchase agreement.
Okay.
It's just anytime we order any truck, uh, on the trash, I say on any truck, but on the trash side particularly, they build it from the chassis to the body to the piece. So it's not really retrofitting. They just have to, they finish off your custom order essentially, so it's parted out.
It's part of the, the three hundred or thereabouts.
Pyramid does that building, that piece, the fifty percent down is just kind of like a, a down payment as they do their portion of the, of the side. So they have the chassis in stock. It's to put the body and to put the steering wheel and the, the right side all onto it. It's just part of that process. Um, and if you look back on the other trucks we purchased, like even the cardboard truck we got through the grant, which I think was the most recent one. No, actually, I think we got a, we, it made more sense to outright buy one commercial truck last year. So we outright bought one instead of leasing it, but it was the same process. We got the chassis, then they put the body on and the right side, steering on. And it doesn't really cost extra. It's just part of the overall bid of, of purchasing a trash truck.
Okay. And this, this is at least the second time we've, and gone through the lease process. So we're really building into the, the system now of being able to get more at one time.
I think that really helps us. Um, there, you pay slightly more money upfront in any lease, right? I mean, even with a good stopgap or, which these have, and even with the Sourcewell contract buying these things down, it makes it really close. Um, but to be able, for us to be able to put down eight hundred and some thousand dollars is really difficult, um, on the vehicles. Um, so we've, we've leaned toward the lease and part of that was playing catch-up from years past. I think it was year twenty-twenty where the trucks, the residential trucks were in a shape that they had, uh, holes in the floor. They were leaking hydraulic fluid. We were, street department was assisting us in going around and pressure washing curbs and, and streets because of the shape they were in. So to be able to, without having a improvement set up to, to replace eight hundred thousand some dollars worth of the truck. It made more sense that we could afford to do the lease and, and pay two hundred and nine thousand per year and, and end up with three trucks simultaneously. Because if we would have tried to buy, so this basically allows me to buy one truck per year at the same cost, but I get three.
Right.
Um, what that allows me to do is if the trucks are in bad shape, uh, if, if I had to wait three more years to, to get technically all three of them in. It became a burden. Um, and even now with the commercial trucks, because they do, we did do the lease and we worked through it. But part of this year, we had to put out notices to the public. We were using the, the grapple truck, which is like the truck with like a boom arm and a hook. We were having to use that some to clear out the three-yard dumpsters because we were having enough technical issues with our commercial fleet. There, it's just getting old to that point that a lot of the, um, the hydraulic, uh, cylinders were failing. So the, it could no longer pick up trucks. We were having to, uh, sort of rebuild, uh, cylinders, um, and having them chromed and all that. Which was fairly expensive, like fifteen thousand, eighteen thousand or something like that each time. And it was, so again, waiting and carrying these other two trucks out and just buying one truck didn't seem to make sense for us. Last year, there was a really good deal on one that was most of the way built, so it, we didn't go with the lease and that we've, it's really helped us. But, um, that's the state. And then because we did that on the residential side, that whole fleet is now five years old. Um, so we're looking to come around and, and probably lease again because if I try to make one of those trucks last ten years and only buy one per year. I know that it's going to be in really, it probably will not even be functional at that point. So with the stopgap and they buy back our trucks, uh, it's like a trade-in value when we turn them in. Um, in the end, it, it comes out really close to just buying one outright that allows me to have a much smaller, single year, um, is what we've looked at, so.
Well, I, I think sort of build into the whole asset management that you're working towards of building the whole timeline.
Yeah, and this could be something that if we could ever slowly come off of this, I mean, you'd have a couple hard years is what you'd have to do. But you could maybe get into a case where you bought like one commercial, one residential truck each year outright. And then you, you built in a phase, but you'd probably have a, one year we had to take a good hit on that some way or another and, and buy a lot of them or buy half of them. And try to drag the others out one year and then you put them on a rotation. Um, and that's just difficult, especially with trash trucks. As most of that comes out of the tax fund and tax fund has just less flexibility than the rest of them. So this seems like the most workable to dig back out of that.
Yeah. And I think it's also good not to go beyond five years on him.
Yeah, and I, we've been putting in a capital improvement fund, um, out there slowly chipping away. We would like to put a transfer station at the landfill, um, which is kind of like a big, uh, roofed structure. In which case, all the trash basically gets dumped on the floor. It gets pushed into like a, a hook truck container, like a really large, like a forty-yard or something, or even a semi-trailer. And then that goes up to the hill. And then the trash trucks don't have to off-road multiple times every single day. And there's, from talking to the manufacturers and different things, the trucks would likely gain a year or two life if they didn't have to off-road two or three times a day. Driving up on the landfill to dump. Um, so we're still cost-analyzing that. Is it worth the, the transfer station, which is not cheap? Three to five million dollars estimated to build a building that large and to, and to drop it in. Is it worth adding a couple years to the trucks and spreading them out? And it makes, everything's been really volatile since twenty twenty. Uh, trash trucks have went up fifty percent, um, since then, and they have not come back down. So that's, it's hard to factor in what does that equation look like when you had some of these really big increases. Um, it, it makes it like, well, maybe the three to five million is way easier to do when they're up fifty percent, but will they ever go down? Will they not go down? Because it changes the whole equation. I mean, that's a hundred thousand dollars essentially is what we're talking about per truck is what the increase was, so. Um, which again, when we were behind, the lease definitely became more necessary at that point when they all went up a hundred thousand dollars per truck from what they were pre-two thousand twenty, so.
Okay, just expensive business.
Yeah, it is.
Any other discussion or a motion?
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi?
Recommendation to enter into agreement with Huntington Bank for a lease of. Recommendation to enter into agreement with Huntington Bank for a lease of the three commercial trash trucks as presented?
And I will second the motion. There's a motion, is there any further discussion? There's a motion and a second to enter into agreement with Huntington Bank for the lease of three commercial trash trucks as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve amendment number two to contract ninety-seven dash two thousand and eighteen for the levy professional services.
Yes, Madam President and Board. As you know, we recently received a grant for the levy project at the treatment plant. And as part of that, and, and as just, as part of moving this project forward, there are additional services that weren't covered in the original contract or that have changed a little bit because of both the timing of how long it's taken to get, get approval through all the, the permitting agencies as well as the timing of the grant process. And so some tweaks are, are being made to the final design, and especially the permitting side. We're having to reapply for some things that were approved a number of years ago. And then while we were waiting for our CLOMAR to come through to allow us to actually move forward with the project, that took just so long that some of the other permits had to expire in that time. So, so there's some work with that, just general bidding assistance, and then construction-related services. So at key points in the project, they'll come in, do density testing and, and things like that to, to be able to put the report together that's needed to certify the levy and its design and get it actually approved for, through all the agencies that's, that's needed. So, so we asked for an updated scope and, and fee, and so this, we have some funds that are left over. I think about nineteen thousand dollars remaining in our current budget and scope. And so the net increase for this request is a hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars, and it's our recommendation to, to approve that with Christopher Burke.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Motion for recommendation to approve amendment number two to contract ninety-seven dash two thousand and eighteen for the levy professional services as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve amendment number two to contract ninety-seven dash two thousand and eighteen for levy professional services as presented. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. The next item of business is the recommendation to approve an engagement letter with Baker Tilly for landfill financial assert, assurance services.
Madam President and Board, this is something we do every year. Instead of purchasing private insurance that basically assures that if the landfill were closed, were to close, there's funds available to continue with all the needed testing or, or closeout stuff for the landfill. Years ago, I mean, it was, we're saving a hundred-plus thousand dollars every year by basically insuring ourself. And but as part of that process, there's a, a formal process created by the legislature in Indiana that allows us to do that. And part of that is a, a, a financial assurance test by this third-party, or by a third-party consultant. And so Baker Tilly has done that for us for a number of years. And so we're just making that recommendation to approve their engagement letter for a cost of seven thousand dollars for them to do that this year.
Questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
President Miller?
Yes, Mr. Bakshi.
Recommendation to approve the engagement letter with Baker Tilly for landfill financial assurance services as presented.
And I will second the motion. There's a motion and a second to approve engagement letter with Baker Tilly for landfill financial assurance services as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, motion carries. And that takes us to miscellaneous. Is there any other business to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second the motion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. And I will turn the meeting over to President Bakshi for the Stormwater Management Board.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the Richmond Sanitary District Stormwater Management Board meeting for May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. First item of the agenda is the approval of board minutes from April first, twenty-twenty-five.
And President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve minutes of the April first, twenty-twenty-five meeting as presented.
I will second. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. The second item is the approval of invoices from check dates March twenty-eighth, April fourth, April eleventh, April eighteenth, April twenty-fifth, and May second and May ninth of twenty-twenty-five.
And President Bakshi, I would like to make a motion to approve invoices from check dates March twenty-eighth, April fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, and May second and ninth of twenty-twenty-five totaling ninety-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, with a significant invoice being Cooley Contracting of seventy thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
I will second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. The next item is recommendation to approve amendment number two to contract ninety-seven dash twenty-eighteen for levy professional services.
Yes, Mr. President and Board. So this is the same thing I didn't mention earlier. This contract was approved and originally done by both boards, and so this is just coming to both boards for that, that same approval.
Is it a fifty-fifty split or...?
I don't remember, I should have looked, yeah. It will be, it will be the same split as we've had. I believe it is a fifty-fifty split, but I don't recall off the top of my head, it's, it's been too long.
I was surprised at how long though it was.
Yeah, yeah, we started this a good, good bit ago.
Yeah.
Well, any other questions or comments? You know, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve amendment number two to contract ninety-seven dash two thousand and eighteen for levy professional services as presented.
I will second. There's been a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion has been approved. This takes us down to miscellaneous, is there anything for miscellaneous?
I, I will make one just general statement or comment. We attended the MS four annual meeting this, this week, and there are some changes, some things coming legislatively that have been approved. I don't think we're a hundred percent sure yet how that impacts us, it definitely does. But there wasn't a lot of clarity that came from the meeting, which we hoped there would be. It, it, it deals with how we are able to regulate locally versus what is approved from a regulatory standpoint at the state level. Normally, you see things that locally you're allowed to regulate to a higher level or, or different. You know, you have to meet the minimum state requirements, but then, you know, as local things, you know, in every community, problems or issues might be different. This may change some of that ability, so we'll see, we'll be getting with the law department and, and kind of sorting through some of that. But didn't, didn't get, I guess, the clarity we were hoping we might so far. But that'll, that'll be something that will likely be coming at some point here in the near future, so...
Thank you. With anything else, all in, a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
I second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you so much.